Which is free from hazing, harassment, bullying, and based on sound instructional classroom management practices and clear attendance and policies. And then it says administrative responsibilities and the board has said expectations for behaviors and the consequences of engaging in prohibited conduct will be set forth in the student handbook, which will be posted on each school's website. So the board has delegated those decisions to the administration. So the short answer then to the question is, should there be a policy? Well, the board wants a policy, the board can choose to discuss a policy, but it's not a requirement. The third question then is, am I prohibited from doing it? And there is no prohibition in state or federal law from having anything. Yeah, I think again, back to those days of the nineteen eighties when I was in high school. There were things called Walkmans at the time, which were little devices where you put cassette tapes and had earphones in. And again, we weren't allowed to have them in school. Teachers said, keep them at home. I think the important thing to remember about the cell phone policy, and I've read comments, I haven't had anyone contact me directly, but I think it's important to remember this was not the superintendent issuing a dictate. It was not even the high school principals. It was an ongoing faculty discussion. And our teachers, who are the professionals in the classroom, have determined that they've been a distraction to the educational environment. I've heard that since I interviewed for the position. So it really is a grassroots effort. And as superintendent, I support the teachers who are saying, this is something we need to tackle. So that's my long answer to, should there be a policy? That really is a board question.
It seems a very significant issue that should have some clear guidelines that are institutionalized beyond administrative staffing. So it is such a pervasive and challenging issue. It's larger than the Harwood School. Cross, it's not, you know, being considered as part of it, and yet they have a middle school. So it's interesting to me. And I feel as though it should be elevated to the point of policy for the school district because not just high schoolers, not just middle schoolers have cell phones in school. There are very clear reasons why some children should have access to their cell phones. There's a nod to that in the procedure without clear guidelines. And I feel like it should be codified in a more significant way and be elevated to the status of policy.
And I would say that there are school districts in states across the country, including the state of Vermont, that are considering this just because of the extensive research in the increase of student anxiety, depression. That's, that's again, you know, I do teach some masters level courses. You're always careful that correlation does not equal causality. But there's enough evidence anecdotally and research based on some, some heavy hitters in our nation that says that this is an issue. So I think the administration, I'm sure the teachers would be very appreciative if this is something that the board wanted to examine and study and potentially put policy in place.
Thank you, Danielle. Anybody else? Any questions? Do we see anybody online? I can't see him. Okay, so thank you for that question and that topic. Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, so my question again, just certainly back around. And let me just preface this by saying, I am a hundred percent sympathetic to the situation. I, I'd be the first one to admit that I don't model great behavior either with my phone in different meetings and whatnot. But the problem that I have or that I keep going back to is spending twenty-two thousand dollars on it. And I look, I did a quick look at some other school districts, South Burlington, Burlington, I think CBU was the other one I looked at. And they were all able to come forward with a policy without spending any, any taxpayer money or any money that could go to other things. So my question, I guess, is, Mike, is how would you justify spending twenty-two grand on this, on this procedure policy, whatever we're calling it, when we just laid off teachers last year and we're facing another budget? Let's call it a crisis, I guess. How, don't you think there was other things we could have spent twenty-two thousand dollars on?
Well, I think that's a little bit of a loaded question. What I can say is it is Esser funds. And I can say that we had remaining funds that must be spent within the next thirty days. And it, we can't spend the twenty-two thousand dollars that's remaining for a teacher salary that's ongoing and recurring. We can spend it for one-time expenses. The high school has the authority to spend it out of their own funds. If the board does not want to spend this on this particular issue, the high school has the authority to spend it out of their own budget. So it's not something that requires school board approval. They already have approval for other issues, but it was really a building-based decision and we had remaining funds. So that would be my answer. I can't really address the other questions that you had.
I just want to push back on this idea a little bit about, you know, how can we push forward on something that costs money when we want to chunks oppose that against budgetary issues that stem from a larger state issue? I really feel like that's a disingenuous argument that if we have a genuine argument around the policy, I'd like to hear that argument. Considering that this is the kind of policy that I'm, excuse me, procedure, that I would be absolutely for and find that it's absolutely beneficial to the kids. I'd actually be in favor of, yes, seeing it turned into policy. And I think that's a wonderful idea from Danielle. Because I think that there's less ambiguity then, school by school. So I think that's brilliant for Danielle to bring that up. But I also just think that, and I challenge you, Mike Bishop, to, you know, if you, if you have an argument based upon the policy, you know, I'd really like to hear that argument.
Oh, there's no argument. It's just about the money is what my concern was. And actually, you teach at South Burlington and they have a great policy and it didn't cost any money. That was my only concern.
Thanks, guys. Next, or anything else on cellphone discussion, anybody? Okay. Go ahead.
Just on the leadership report, the last item on it had to do with the principal changeover in Harwood. And I just think that would be useful to have a brief comment from Mike about that. That's a significant change. And I think back to our budget conversations, there was a lot of loaded conversation around administrative leadership and some strong statements from you even about the ratio. So I'm just curious if this is being, is a right now decision or is this through the school year, see how it goes decision? Like, what's the thinking and plan at this point?
And thank you for the question. I was gonna, I was gonna address that a little bit during personnel, but I'm happy to do it now. The school has had a co-principal model for a number of years. There's other administrative support. Just my assessment and having discussed this with Meg McDonough, who is the other co-principal who's remaining, is I think this school would be better served by a single principal model. Since, since the year before I arrived, we've, we are down, after Laurie Lee's, we'll be down to two administrative support positions based on the original six that we had a director of counseling at one point, that's not there. We had a director and assistant director of high school special education, both of them have been eliminated. We have two co-principals and an assistant principal. So with that person going, it will be down to two. We've, we've in essence reduced four other positions in the last two years. I do believe professional, my professional assessment is that we need another administrator. We don't need that to be a co-principal. We can have it as a more junior administrative position, assistant principal. I think, I think Meg McDonough has a lot of support from the teachers that I've talked to and based on some work I did here last year. And I think she would be a great person to be the sole leader, sole principal of the school. So that's, that's my recommendation to the board, that we appoint her as the principal. And then we look to hire a assistant administrative position.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next is the overview of the teacher, new teachers and staffing changes.
You don't mind pulling, if you want to pull it up, or I can, if you want to stop sharing, I can share my screen, actually. So I can, that way I can advance. That would be perfect. Let's see. So I'm happy to take any other questions, but we did, we started school yesterday, but we had our first all, all staff meeting last Tuesday. Last Monday, we had our new teacher meeting. And one of the, one of the items I, I used to do in my previous position as assistant superintendent and superintendent was report to the board on our new teachers that we've hired. I have not done that in the past two years. So I have kind of re-implemented that procedure here. And let me share now. I have a short presentation that I want to give you. Okay, first I want to, I want to say that we're a people business, we're a student business, a teacher business. And I do want to highlight, last year, we had a remarkable senior who was a photographer who happens to be directly related to our board chair, Poppy Woods. And I have a small satellite office at Harwood and it looked very boring and I needed some, some pictures to live in it. So I asked Poppy if she would take a couple of pictures for me of some students and teachers. So I was, I was floored and just overwhelmed when she gave this to me at the end of the year. She spent far more time creating it, but it's called the Humans of Harwood. And it really shows what, what this school's about. It's about its students, it's about its teachers and interactions we have. So this is always kind of the, what I think about when I think about hiring and what the importance of who we're bringing into our school. So we brought in twenty, and I put the, the word new in quotations, new teachers that we introduced to the district last year. We, when we were talking about the budget pieces, we, we eliminated twenty-seven and a half positions. And we had to do so in that third budget. And one of my concerns was that we would also, in addition to the people that we lost through elimination of positions, whether it was by attrition or RIF, that we would also have people who would start leaving the school district because of concerns of stability. And we did, we had far more people leave than positions. Twenty is a lot for a school district of seventeen hundred students. But we found twenty remarkable people to come into our doors. And one of the other pieces, we talk about budget, but this is a nationwide issue. And Caitlin Hollister spoke, who works with Champlain College, and a lot of our, our new teachers can, can share with you that across the nation, there has been a significant decline in the teacher candidates that, that institutions of higher education are seeing and that schools are seeing in hiring. So this was a report from ABC. I tried to find a nice chart that illustrates nationwide what teacher prep schools are seeing. I couldn't find that quickly, but this illustrates last school year, the states in red are states that were, were reporting a significant teacher shortage. We are down teachers, we have a couple of positions that we have not filled. We are still a, I believe, a good school system and people generally want to work for us. One of the challenges that this board has tackled is the low teacher starting salary, which is slated to come up with a new contract. But when you break down what we were, we are paying last year, new teachers, it came out to about twenty-seven dollars an hour, which if you're trying to find a home in Waterbury, Duxbury or the Valley, it's very hard to find housing if you're making twenty-seven dollars an hour as a professional. So just the context that I also like to put this, this in is that we are facing a shortage in Vermont. We're facing a shortage in this nation. And it's important that we're also providing support to our teachers because fewer and fewer people are wishing to enter the profession due to many of the challenges. And I could speak for that for another hour. But I did ask our new teachers a couple of questions. Some of them were fun, some of them were just trying to understand who's working for us so that we can, over the next couple of years, start to glean some, some potential patterns. So I'm just going to go through some of them. One of the questions I asked is what undergraduate college did you attend? And this is the response of where people attended. A wide variety of schools from, from in-state Vermont to University of Tampa, Florida, to the West Coast, to Colorado. So we have a wide range of experiences and professional training for our teachers. Another question I ask is the highest education you have received? And in our profession, when I started teaching thirty-four years ago, the dominant number of people hired in most school districts were at the bachelor's level and were fresh out of school. So I think it's also important to note that only fifteen percent of our, our new teachers, you know, three teachers are coming in with just a bachelor's degree to, to our school system. Another question that I asked was, just curious, did you attend a public or private high school? Some of these are information that we can glean for the future. Some of them I just found interesting to see the background and experiences our, our new teachers have coming in. This is a big question that I, I was really curious to see what they were doing six months ago. And you can see the, the kinds of responses I gave. And what I find significant on here is we have, of our twenty teachers, none of them were in college last school year. They all have some degree of educational or life experience. And I think this is critical. While in some ways it's good, it, it does give me some pause that we have no one who is coming to us as a starting teacher. And I, again, I don't know, we talked about, I talked about in relation to cell phones, correlation and causality. I'm not exactly sure why, but that is something I think we need to pay attention to. Question, where do you graduate from high school? I was wondering if we had any Harwood grads. We have a couple, but again, a wide variety of teachers, some, some put in where they actually went to school, but a wide variety of experiences of where they went to school coming to us. I asked, how did you learn about our schools? You know, why, basically, why, why were you attracted to apply? And again, I think this is significant and something that I would want to work on and I would hope to work on. We have no graduates of Harwood. And I think we want to make sure that our, our students see that teaching is a noble profession and a good profession. And I would hope that we would see some teachers in the future. And this is something certainly I'm going to talk to the staff about ways we can do something to encourage our own students and grow the profession from within our towns. This is one that I was very excited to see. What's your hope for longevity? And the people who were applying to positions, the, the plurality of them either want to be here for their career or for a significant amount of time. And I see ten to twenty years with the experience we're getting in the, probably the age of some of our new teachers that ten to twenty years may be a career for many of them. So I think this is a very positive, some very positive information for us. Another question I asked, and I went into some details in some of these questions, but if you were looking for a home, were you able to secure housing? And I know that, that some people were not. I also know that one of our principals has offered space for a teacher in order to get them to teach for them. So that tells you a little bit about the challenges, especially challenges of living in the valley. And, and I also think it's, it's important to note that, that we're going to be increasing the challenges to find people in our classrooms in the future. And it's just something I want to continue to focus on and would welcome questions now or in the future or anything that comes to your mind. So just wanted to give you some, some feelings and very excited for the new people. I also do want to mention too, that I didn't include a slide on it, but we, we in Harwood, but schools across the, the state are seeing an increasing number of teachers for whom we need to apply to the state for a provisional license. Who are not coming in with a license from their own preparation. We're providing some on-the-job training. They have enough education and training to come in the door, but they need to follow up and receive their teaching license from the state of Vermont. So that's another cause of concern. Last year, I think we were at sixteen or seventeen and that number grew this year. So from talking to Secretary of Education, Agency of Education people, but they, they are seeing an increase in applications from across the school districts in the state. So this is another thing to keep our eyes on. And that's, I'm happy to take questions on that or any other topic that you'd like me to discuss. Mr. Bishop?
I just want to say this was really good information to have. This is really helpful. I am definitely concerned about housing for teachers in the future. I, I, the rents are, are, I mean, every, every month or it seems like they're going up. I don't, I don't know. And one thing I just want to put out there that, and, and Waterbury is, I know, has a housing task force. And this is the kind of information that would be helpful to them. So I'm going to share this with them as they look at, looking at workforce housing and, you know, taking a look at different options that we could do to help this type of, you know, teachers and, and other types of workers find housing. Because I think that's going to be, I think that's going to be a huge problem going, going forward.
Thanks, Mike. They're really good points. I'm glad you made them. And just some further insights from looking at our application data in general. We, we receive more applicants for teachers in the Waterbury, Duxbury area, for our schools in that area. And I think part of that is due to, number one, a little more availability of housing, but also just the access to eighty-nine and other communities where there's more housing. So we, we have had challenges in the valley with, with finding people. And like I said, our principals have had to really put out word to community members to find housing for some people that we've been hiring, especially when you consider our starting, our, our lower-end salaries. But I also know that in some cases, our principals have actually provided housing in order to get people to work in their schools.
Is an ongoing forever problem, it feels like. Okay, thank you for that. Next, we're going to hear from Lisa Essler, our CFO.
So I just put a quick report together for the first board meeting. We have not finalized closing out fiscal year twenty-four yet. We are in our trial balance period, so we will be wrapping up in two days. And I'll have a final preliminary, a preliminary, but then a final number for where we ended fiscal year twenty-four. A lot, closing the year is later than usual. A lot of our invoicing came in much later this year. And we had to get those in for, applied towards the fiscal year twenty-four year-end number. So we will be wrapping that up and I'll have a final figure for you early October. And we are starting our, our audit on September ninth. A little, normally we do it about the second week of August, but we were able to schedule it September ninth. But RH Smith, RHR Smith has hired a lot of additional accountants. We had some issues the last two years getting our audit very late. Last year, we received it two days before the due date. So we are, they did an overhaul, hired a lot more staffing and accountants to be able to service all of the school districts. So we are hoping and pushing that we will get a draft audit by December this year. That's our timeline that I put out to RHR. So we're hoping to get that done. I also included an update of projects that were priority of our maintenance agreement reserves. Over the summer, we did get a lot of projects done, but a lot of them were also put on hold or waiting for supplies or waiting for quotes. But then also, and we'll discuss this later on in the agenda, we had the, the floods that obviously happened in, across it and Moretown that kind of put us behind the eight ball. So in my report, we'll tell you what's completed, what's, a couple of other items are still outgoing. But those were the priority items that we had approved for the maintenance agreement for, for the summer of fiscal year twenty-four. Do we have any questions?
We have Ray do that cool spreadsheet where he shows us all the projects and which ones have been completed. Because I can't, like, it looks like a lot of work got done, which is awesome, but it would be nice to see that in relation to, and not just for the school board, but for the public watching as well, to see that list of projects and how this completed list stacks up against what is necessary. Thanks.
That in the link, because we have, we keep that. So I'll add that to this.
Are you finished, Lisa? Okay, I just wanted to tag on to her part of the presentation. Lisa and I had sent out some information that was a joint memo from School Business Officials Association, the Superintendents Association and the School Board Association that talks about the, it's a budget, budget planning document that talks about some of the items that will be under consideration. It's a really good document. It's, it's twelve pages, but I made some copies. I'll pass them out to people here. I'd previously sent it out, but I wanted everyone to have a hard copy of it because it is such a good resource. Caitlin had mentioned that I'm on the, I'm one of the thirteen members in the State Commission for the Future of Vermont Education. We start out working. I've also been appointed to the School Finance Subcommittee. We start our work next week. And, and one of our early deadlines is to have a recommendation, required to have a recommendation to the legislature by mid-December regarding some preliminary work that they could do in this coming session regarding school budgets. So it's going to be a lot of work in the next two months because we really have to have something that we're working through by November in order to have it out to schools and legislature in time to consider for the coming year. So that will be part of the work, but I'll pass this out. And I would encourage everyone to take a, a good look at it and read through.
Okay, thank you. So next, we're going to hear from Mike Bishop from Finance.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ashley. So I'm just going to give a quick update on the Finance Committee. And you guys can ask some questions. I see we have fifteen minutes. I don't, I don't know if it would take that long, but, so the Finance Committee, as we all remember, was formed last budget season or kind of at the end of budget season. It's myself, Bobby, Dan, Steve. Am I missing somebody, missing somebody else? But anyway.
You're missing me, Mike, because I've been missing.
Oh, there you are, there you are. Also, it's funny, you're actually showing up as Dr. Monica on my, my Zoom for some reason. I'm not sure why, but that's okay.
Got a promotion.
Mike, I think, I think one, one of me is enough.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, one of me is definitely enough. So anyway, we, we had our first meeting, or sorry, we, we got started, we had the first meeting, we, we organized. And I would say, and I'm giving a fair assessment, I think we've done some good work. I think we started off on one path and, and kind of went to another, which is not a bad thing. It's just not, I think, what we had intended when we first started out. And with any sort of new group or, or new committee, there's going to be some, some growing, you know, just trying to figure out a kind of a vibe and the energy and where we wanted to go with it. One, one thing we didn't take into consideration is just a lot of people on vacations in the summertime and trying to get information. So that was a little difficult. But with that said, we, we have made some progress. Our group met and we decided we were going to kind of look at short-term goals and, and our longer-term goals. And, and our short-term goals was looking at efficiencies right now that we could, we could present to the big board this fall, which we are still on track to. I think it's either at our next meeting or the following meeting that we're going to be presenting some, some information to the, to the big board. And then a kind of our longer-term strategy was to look at things like consolidation of our schools. We brought a whole bunch of different scenarios to, to, to the group. And when it was kind of, kind of like filtered out, we had taken the approach to maybe looking at just what it would look like to consolidate the middle schools. And then with some really good counsel from, from Lisa, she suggested that she meet with the administration first of all the schools. So also all the principals and anybody else who's considered admin to try to get some feedback from them. And although that maybe seemed like it slowed us down a little bit, I think that was really helpful. I think that's probably going to work out really good. So they had an admin meeting, I think, a couple of weeks ago, and they formed their own tiny committee that's going to meet up with us at one of our future meetings. So we're going to take a look at everything like class sizes and also what it would look like, again, if we're looking at consolidating your schools, what that would look like. That part of it was never intended, I just want to be clear, it was never intended to be a fast process. In fact, it really can't be a fast process and I don't need to rehash why. I think we've talked about that. But the shorter-term efficiencies, that's what we're really looking at right now. We, there's been some good talks. You're going to see some stuff about transportation and, and some other things that are really going to be helpful for us as we move into this, to this budget season. So we are meeting, we are working. And although maybe we got a little slow just because of summertime and some other reasons. maybe we got a little slow just because of summertime and some other reasons, we are, we are definitely working. And I think it's, the committee will, will come out with, with some good thoughts here in a couple of weeks. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Hey, Mike, it's Elizabeth. I don't know if you can see that my hands up or not.
I can't, but I hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, sounds good. So if I'm understanding correctly, the budget that will then go to the public in March will only have sort of near-term cost savings and will not have things like school consolidation or revised class sizes for fiscal year next year, that that would have to be like a two or three-year, even maybe four-year out recommendation. Is that correct?
I would say, I would say that the actual consolidation part would, would not be, unless something drastically changes and there's some emergency and who knows, maybe there would be, but I don't see that being something on the agenda for, for next year's school budget. The, the class sizes and, and, and the other stuff you mentioned is something that we're definitely working on right now. And that's probably more realistic than, than saying a full consolidation of schools. But that, even that would be a process because it depends on the format and the makeup of the schools, right? If we're moving grades around and that sort of thing, that could take, that could take some time. But I think that there's going to be immediate efficiencies that will come up, that will go over in the next month or so, or whenever we're giving our presentation in a couple of weeks. I can't remember if it's the next meeting or the following meeting, but when we give that, we'll have that. We'll, we'll have some media, some immediate efficiencies.
Do you have any gut feeling in terms of those immediate efficiencies in terms of, I'm starting out the number, Dr. Mike, please correct me. Let's say we're at twenty-six thousand dollars of people, and I know there's a whole weighted average thing, too. With those immediate efficiencies, are we thinking like there's a three percent, five percent savings? I'm just thinking again, in terms of socialization with public with enough time prior to the budget so that we're, again, and, and putting this in a box, I'm not trying to like lock you into it's going to be four point three percent. I just understand, is it like one percent savings? Is it five percent savings? Just sort of any gut reaction at this point?
Yeah, I would say that I don't think we're there yet. And I think we're still gathering numbers. I know Lisa, we had tossed around and I don't want to speak for her, but you know, just getting like, what's the healthcare cost going to be? You know, what's, what's this cost going to be? Some of those numbers are starting to come into focus. But I wouldn't want to say at today's meeting, any sort of idea. I'm also concerned that the state, we talked about this at our last meeting at great length, you know, what's the state going to do? Are they going to throw a wrench into the formula at some point? Or is it just going to be like last year? Those are things we don't know yet. But it's funny, you mentioned like the socialization and that sort of stuff, because that's kind of what we talked about last time, that, you know, when, when we see people out about, you know, what are we talking about here? What should be our talking points? You know, and, and I think that that's all part of it. I, but I don't, I don't have a number yet whether I feel comfortable saying like this is what I think it's going to be. But I will say that I think that's coming soon. And I would say we have another Finance Committee meeting, our, our meeting schedule got thrown off a little bit. So we're having another meeting next, next Wednesday, so September fourth, and that meeting will have a lot more information Lisa will be giving us. So, so then at the next meeting, at our next big board meeting, or I can't remember what Ashley had us down for, that's when we'll be getting more into the numbers.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike?
And I just want to say, can I just say one more thing, Ashley? I just want to thank Lisa for all her work that she's done over the summertime. You know, traditionally, this maybe is a quiet time for Lisa, but it sounds like getting nowhere through this and all the other work that she does. It was actually a really busy time. And then to throw the Finance Committee on top of it for the summer, I, I really just want to publicly thank Lisa for all of her hard work this summer on, on working with us, even coming to a meeting on her vacation day, which is really weird. But, you know, I just, I think it's important that, that she gets acknowledged for, for all of her hard work that she's doing for this committee as well. So thank you, Lisa.
I second that. Thank you, Lisa. This is a lot of, it's a heavy lift on top of an already heavy lift. And, and, and we all know that. So definitely, thank you for your summer work and the work to come. Okay, that wraps up our finance conversation. Our next piece is our first read on policies. Did everybody take some time and read through these policies? And does anybody have any questions or concerns that Danielle could answer to our policy lady?
I do.
Go ahead. Rosenberg, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I did have a couple of questions. On the distribution of non-school sponsored literature in the schools, there was two options discussed, one for districts that don't allow any distribution of non-school literature, and the other option for districts that allow distribution of non-school literature. And I didn't know which one we were.
We are in favor of allowing non-school literature in schools in accordance with this policy.
Okay, that, that sounds good.
And I would say, Steve, we didn't clearly mark that, but we do have a number of partner organizations in the school district that provide programming for our students, and we would not want to close them out of the schools. We want to make sure that they have access. We just have to have procedures in place that, that allow for that.
Yeah, that's fine. I have one more question on another first read, C1, Board Meetings, Agenda Preparation. So in Agenda Preparation, the Board Chair prepares all the agendas, and then the inclusion of items will be at the discretion of the Board Chair and the Superintendent. Unless a majority of the board votes to place an item on the agenda. And I thought it's a little bit, kind of not as clean to have items at the discretion of the Board Chair and the Superintendent, just on procedural grounds. I would suggest inclusion of items is just at the discretion of the Board Chair. I mean, just as a matter of organization, not in terms of who people are right now.
Generally, you do include the Superintendent just because, for example, like on our Agenda Night, there are personnel items, and they are items that, that the Superintendent is the CEO controls and puts on. That would not be something that the Board Chair would have knowledge of. So, so it's more procedural. I don't, the Superintendent, myself, or most superintendents don't. We've all, the Board Chair.
I was just thinking of a worst-case scenario where the Board Chair and the Superintendent don't agree on an inclusion of items. Maybe I'm overthinking.
Let's ask Danielle about that.
Want to point out that the policy had previously been approved and adopted by, am I saying that right? By this board. And there was some discussion about this at the time. So I don't remember all of the conversation, but there was a general consensus that the pairing with the Board Chair and the Superintendent was useful. We can open that discussion back up. The reason that you're seeing this policy again is because there was a separate policy that addressed some other issues beyond just the agenda preparation and distribution that we wanted to roll in, including the posting of a schedule and things like that. So we said, why do we have two separate policies for that? I think there was three, actually, or something. Yeah, so we rolled them together. And so that's why you're seeing this again. That said, we could bring back up this issue of the, the agenda being, you know, co-developed, if you will. But at the time, when we first discussed it, that was favored by the board because that is how we do business.
Yeah, if other members feel this is not a big deal, like, I don't have to go further with this.
As I'm currently occupying that spot, when we develop the agenda, it's in a meeting with Mike, Lisa, Cindy, and myself. And we bring information together, the board side and the administration side. There are things we don't know about. So it is a co-project, certainly each time we do it. So I think it makes sense to keep it the way it is personally.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, good questions. Thank you, Steve. Any other questions on these first reads? Just for the, the new student reps, we get these policies when we've sort of have been processing them for the last, the whole of last year, we got through all of them to this, right? We have a small policy committee, Danielle and Tori, who's not here this evening, but they pick them apart and really analyze the, the wordage and what it, just what it is, and if it's, if it's current, if it's, if it's right for school as it is now. And they weigh in a lot of things. So we're cycling through, and this is kind of the end of the cycle, right?
Right. We, the only policy that's left, with the exception of potentially the cell phone policy, is a wellness policy, and we will be looking for student reps in that conversation. So we decided to table the wellness policy because it is, the scope of it really needs to include staff from the school and student body folks, so that we can be looking together at what does the wellness policy mean for students and faculty, and also how do we want to espouse it for the entire district? So it's a big policy and one that we, needs broader consideration.
Okay, thank you. So those, we'll move forward then, right, to, do we, to second read? Okay, now we're on to second reads, which is when we take a look after they've been checked, we've looked at them, they go back, and now we're warning them for, what is it called? Warning it for adoption, sorry. Does anyone have any questions about the policies in the second read? And there, most of them are deletions, actually, because they're included in other policies already. Cindy?
These are ones that we would have looked at at our last meeting and first read, and in June. And if we had had commentary then, these guys would have looked, taken that commentary and put it in for the second read, so.
Not exactly fresh information, but do we have any questions? Cashel, go ahead.
Question about F3, the search and seizure of students by school personnel. Out of pure curiosity, I was wondering what an example would be of reasonable grounds for suspecting at the time of initiating the search?
So, so there's a little bit of history to it. In nineteen eighty-five, there was a U.S. Supreme Court case TLO versus the state of New Jersey, and it was over a search of a student. And I, so, so there's a legal procedure. So first of all, it really needs to be administrator who would conduct that search. The criminal justice system says you have to have probable cause. The U.S. Supreme Court said that a school can have reasonable suspicion. So an example could be a student reports that they saw a student smoking marijuana in the bathroom and reports that to the administration. That report, according to the Supreme Court and other court rulings, would constitute reasonable suspicion. So then the, the principal could conduct a search of the student. But there's a very high legal bar, so that, that's why you'll see a number of references, actually. If you look through the F3, the very bottom of the first page, it references New Jersey versus TLO, and talks about, it can't be a random suspicionless search. There has to be some grounding for the reason for that. So this, this lays out what the expectations are from law of the board towards the administration. Did I answer your question? Thanks. Good question. You can tell I've taught school law before. I enjoy doing that.
All right, if we don't have Ellie, go ahead.
Pretty. This isn't actually a question, but whoever's presenting, your MacBook is about to die. And it's not charging. So
We've got to put your
It'd be, it'd be kind of terrible if the Zoom totally
No, this is just the second read. It'll be in the action, or it can be either action if you said.
So at the next meeting, we will adopt the ones in the second read.
If there is an action item before.
Right, and, and when we get to action. Okay, sorry, sorry, getting, getting acclimated. Okay. Next is discussion, and we are going to talk about a few different things. One is Moretown flood relief and get, I think, an update from Mike. All right.
We have a whole team here. And online, we also have Ray Dagel and Kate Liptak. And if you could both show yourself there. I, I do first want to commend Ray and Kate for their hard work. We went through a flood at Moretown in December, as everyone remembers. And then for the second year in a row, on July eleventh, we experienced another flood. And I've told some people that my wife and I take blame for the second flood because July eleventh, there was our anniversary. So I think we brought some bad luck to the area, but we did have significant water that came from the hill behind the school. That, that, the source of the water has been an ongoing discussion with some local residents in the town. And I'm happy to report that that work has now been completed. We, we also have to give a lot of credit to the contractors who came in, GW Savage, who were on-site within hours and did a remarkable job of remediation efforts, clean out. Lisa and Ray can talk a little bit more about the details, but just because of the extent and the time that we had to go through this time, we found more evidence of flood damage that we believe pre-existed the July eleventh flood behind cabinets and wallboards that looked like there was, there was issues there for a long time. So this required more extensive remediation. It also required new boilers. And I'll ask Ray to talk a little bit about that piece and relocation of those boilers. There is some potential, we found out about some potential grants that I learned from the Agency of Education that we're going to apply for. But it took a little bit more time. We were on track to open Moretown on time. However, a number of the supplies, we had some supply chain issues with flooring originally for the restrooms that prevented them from putting the toilets down, and then the kitchen that prevented them from getting the kitchen in order. Fortunately, we did delay because when Lisa and I went through with Kate and Ray on Monday, the kitchen was not ready at that point. So it did require extra work. And we did not want teachers, some of the items that were, that were delayed were also some of the legs for the new furniture, the new cabinets. We did not want teachers to have to unpack boxes, or unpack them, repack them so that the furniture could be finished, and then, and then repack the shelves again. So there was just a lot of work that had to occur. Also, I'll give Ray a chance to talk within the last piece, too, is from just talking to JB, who is a local zoning official and has a lot of knowledge of the area, he recommended that we reach out to an engineer to come and take a look at the building and the work done on private property, but also take a look at the work that was done over the last year. If you recall, last summer, there was a project that had been years in the making that was organized by the town for storm waters around the school. So he took a look at that. And the good news in summary is that the engineer said that we are in much better situation now with the work done on private property as well as the school district property to prevent flooding in the future. But he did give recommendations for other items that the board could consider in the future. So Ray, if you want to take it away?
Yes, thank you. Yeah. July eleventh was an interesting day. We, you know, fortunately, we got GW Savage right on-site to, to begin the cleanup. We're also fortunate, and I want to give, you know, hats off to our contractors that we brought in, Reart Company, and many of the subs who already had a full workload for the summer. And we were able to get them to come in and really commit to making sure the school was going to be ready for opening. And if it weren't for those, And if it weren't for those, um, uh, supply chain issues that we had, I believe we would, we easily would have made that. But such is life in construction, things happen like that. I also want to give, um, a huge shout out to staff, not just facilities, but teachers and the, and the support staff, both at, at Moretown School and, and across the district, who have reached out to help and, um, pull this together. It was a true team effort. And I'm, I'm pretty proud of all those folks, um, and, and happy that they were there. You know, we've, uh, Mike touched on the, on the boiler room. Yeah, we had, uh, close to four feet of water down there, submerged the boilers. This was the second time that we would have rebuilt them in less than a year. It didn't make sense to do that, um, not knowing what the likelihood of this happening again was. So, uh, we implemented a project that we had had on the, on the books that we had put off due to the, the paving project at the, at the school. And that was to replace the boilers with, um, you know, more modern units that are propane fired, but also raise the intake area of the, uh, the air intake for the boiler room by a foot, along with the bulkhead accessing the boiler room, to get it away from the, uh, the water coming in. The, uh, you talked a little bit about the, um, the, um, Mike, um, excuse me, John Petrowski's, uh, report where he, um, talked about the, the work that had been done. He had a few suggestions, things that we could, you know, uh, look into, to see if they're gonna make a difference in the future. We're also planning on talking to our architects and engineers to see what we can do to, uh, further protect the building from future, um, incidents like this. Right now, the school is ready to, ready to open, although some of the cabinetry and millwork won't be, um, in place until October. But, uh, we've, we've got it to a, a place where, um, uh, students and, and teachers can do the important work that they need to do. Any questions, or Kate, do you want to add anything?
I'll chime in with just a couple things. So, um, again, another huge shout out to teachers and staff at Brookside who gave up half an in-service day to come and help our teachers unpack and get set up in their classrooms. So it was really helpful, as well as Ray, um, kind of serving as the superintendent of the job site every day from afar and from here, as well as Greg Wagner and Lindsay Nun, who have been our custodians through this whole, whole process. Ray had a really great idea early on that when we rebuild, we rebuild with water in mind. And that's, I think, really served us well through this process, that all of our cabinetry and everything that's coming in is lifted. So in the event, you know, hopefully it doesn't happen, but if we do take on water again, it's easier to clean out with ways that we can make sure that we're safeguarding our building against future problems. So I thought that was a really good piece of foresight for, for Ray, and I'm appreciating just all of the work that's happened and looking forward to finally being able to have students back tomorrow.
Uh, yeah, a special shout out also to Ray for his incredible hard work on that. It's a, a wild card, and then, and also to Kate, who looks like she's still in her office, and it's like, uh, thank you both for all of this. I mean, it was above and beyond. Danielle? No, go ahead.
Thank you all. I can't even imagine. Moretown School is just, it's such a challenge. Um, I appreciate the updates. You know, I was asking for those at the end of last school year, so that's really helpful. I'm curious if you could speak to the, the cost of this delayed school opening, not in money right now, although that, that is a question I have, but in, um, any, um, longer school year for those students or anything like that, what is the impact of this, um, to those students and families?
Only if there is a delay due to natural causes like this, that the, the state will forgive those, those days. I did before, uh, before we made the decision that we had to delay, I did notify Operations person at Agency of Education to let them know, so they made note of that.
Oh, who's that? Go ahead, JB.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to thank, uh, Ray and the whole team for getting that together. I'd also like to thank, uh, John Petrowski from Trudell Consulting Engineers, who moved pretty quickly, um, when I reached out to him, uh, and gave us a very, not only a very thorough report on the, uh, potential future options, but just on the adequacy of the Fox Farm-run landowners and their work. And then also, a lot of this came to fruition because of Moretown resident Ben Falk, uh, who is, I can't remember exactly what he does, but he is, um, it's, it's in his wheelhouse, and he posted a couple videos on YouTube, uh, that found their way to me from the Moretown Town Office. And that's how kind of we got rolling with this, and they were very thorough and very clear, and, uh, just provided a sound foundation to, to get this moving, so.
Bobby?
I did take a look at, at John Petrowski's report today, and I'm wondering if we will have an opportunity to discuss in the future implications of this in light of the, the Finance Committee as well, in any spending that we do on facilities. We have to kind of work that all in and see what makes the most amount of sense. So anyway, I think a lot of the ideas were good. I mean, I think in general, keeping water away from that building would be, would be the best, and there might, uh, you know, I was intrigued by those possibilities. Anyway, um, just wondering if we're gonna have an opportunity to look at that further?
Definitely will. I mean, all aspects of spending are part of this discussion, and each school and its, you know, pros and cons are definitely what we're talking about. So yes, I would say the answer is yes to that. Okay, anything else on Moretown? Any other questions or comments? Okay, um, the next item here is about a meeting in October. This is brief, but Cindy and I were talking about, um, doing like a mini retreat at the end of one of our meetings or the beginning, um, to talk about interfacing with the public on budget, because we're going to wade into this deep end of money spending, and there are a lot of strong feelings and opinions in our communities, and it is, um, a somewhat difficult thing to talk about, depending on where that person is and you are. So we're going to do a little work on that as well, how we're gonna, uh, discuss it. Do you want to comment, Cindy? It was Cindy's idea.
Think, I think the idea is for us to have an opportunity to get together and talk about how, how we communicate as a whole board with the community, that, um, we are a unit of what, 14 or however many we are, and that it's, it'll be important as we go through this year, talking about these various questions that come up. It may be, it may be as simple as the, or not, which is not simple, but the cell phone thing or the transportation thing, and as well as the budget thing. Um, Mike Bishop had talked to me about there are other things besides budget that we as a board have to deal with. So it's, it's just a good way for us to kind of come together as a board, spend some time talking about how we, how, how, how we come across as a whole board to our communities. Our communities are different. We have six different communities. We have board members representing them. We just thought it was really important to spend some time talking about ourselves as a unit and how we work and function and communicate as a unit.
Thank you. Yeah, so that, look for information about that in upcoming agenda.
Hey, Ashley, can I make a comment? I have my hand up here.
Sorry, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Um, so, well, I think it's a good idea in terms of like how we work together and how we're communicating to the public in terms of how we work together. I just want to make sure that it's okay that individuals on the board might have differing opinions about, you know, the budget, what we're, you know, different aspects of how we're going about this. And so I just want to make sure that we're not meeting to make sure that we all have the same talking points and just all sort of say the same thing. I, I just, we're, we're representatives of our community. We all have different experiences, different backgrounds. So I'm a little bit concerned about this idea of like, you know, that we're unified, like one voice, one opinion, one, you know, standing in terms of this. Uh, I, I don't think that is really the objective of who we are as a board or our roles.
You, um, I don't think, that isn't the objective. The objective is to have common information that we are able to distribute, you know, or able to talk about, not so much. We, everyone on this board definitely has their own opinion. That's why it's a good board. And that's what, I think we all have an expectation that we are allowed to be ourselves and have our own opinions. I think it's more about, I think what we're talking about is a, a unified set of facts, um, as opposed to our opinions. You know, what are we doing with the budget? Here are where, here is where we are at in the discussion. We are talking about this this week, this next week. No, it's more like that, not looking to sculpt anyone's opinion.
That's helpful. Thanks for clarifying.
Sure. Okay, so the next is Superintendent's Evaluation Timeline, which I will let Mike tell you about.
Every year, uh, the board does an evaluation for me, that, that the Board Chair and Vice Chair lead the effort on. So, uh, Ashley, Cindy and I developed kind of the updated calendar for this coming year, uh, just with the milestones, so everyone is aware. And, uh, just wanted to point out two that I had asked when I started for a 360 process, where we have some questions that the Board Committee adopted. For the first year, we just did it, we, we do an alternating schedule, so I just wanted to point out last year, we did the full 360 with community, parents, teachers, students. So this is a year where it'll just be the board, so we alternate every year, so we don't overdo surveys with different groups. So, uh, that process starts with the board in February. We do it in February with the current board, and then, uh, the Board Chair elected in March, uh, we'll send it out to any new board members who come on. So, uh, it, it's the same process. Uh, I always say it's the evaluation that never ends.
Anybody have any questions for Mike about that? Okay, so, um, the next, we're moving on to number seven, which is action items. We are, it did, and hopefully everyone has read through Mike's goals, Superintendent's goals, because we're going to adopt that.
There was one question I ask, uh, while Lisa does lead the efforts with, uh, the Finance Committee and, and the budget work, it's, it's still part of the Superintendent goal for this year, and something that, that I will be involved in as well. And the educational side, when, when issues come up with education, we do have a committee that, uh, we had volunteers from principals, but I, I wanted to make sure, I wanted that to elevate, be elevated to a, a district goal, Superintendent goal level, so that something reported on, as well as the, the, the work that, uh, Mike Bishop and the Finance Committee work on, that it's something else that we discuss on an ongoing basis, and we think that it's probably best to have more discussion, not less regarding budget and finance for the coming year. So that, that is a proposed goal. The other one that we discussed with the Finance Committee was facilities, and, uh, there was a, a part of the goal last year was the community engagement around the bond. The bond is not something, uh, that, uh, the, the, the Board Chair, who was the committee chair at the time, recommended that, uh, the board, and the board agreed to put that on hold, uh, pause. But we do have significant work, so I thought it would be beneficial if Lisa, Ray and I also elevated that to a level, so we could bring to the board recommendations for capital maintenance. And I will say as an aside, one of the big concerns with the new excess spending threshold that was part of the yield bill, one of the concerns that, that many of us have, uh, who sit in my seat around the state, and something that's been discussed at our commission, is this new process, um, bonds are included in that, uh, that spending. So we have discussed the fact that the, the legislature really has disincentivized, uh, maintenance work, and that has to be something that is rolled into our ongoing look at the state, because, uh, uh, we have challenges with our building here, and I know that, that, that there are additional concerns across Vermont, so I just wanted to point that out. But I do want to put in there, there, uh, when, when Mike led the meeting and led the discussion for my goals, the one, a comment was, um, should we discuss, this facility goal was relevant to just Harwood, and the discussion of some of the committee members was, should we also have me look at district-wide facility needs this year, or should that be wait, uh, should we wait? So I put that in and highlight, and wanted to, I, I said to the committee that I'd bring that to the board and see what the board wanted me to do, so, uh, if you want to have some discussion about that, Ashley?
Um, I think at last report, it was 20 million across the district that was short notice. It was like really current stuff, so what do people think about adding that to the goals, to make it a broader look at facilities, not just Harwood? And, and then Steve?
Thanks. I think I was one of the ones that brought it up in the Finance Committee meeting, and I requested a broader scope, because as we start looking at pros and cons of different buildings within a district, that may be a key component of it. And hopefully that, um, is something that we can get ahead of, instead of trying to track it down after the fact.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I, I agree completely with Dan. I mean, it's a pressing issue for the Finance Committee, and it's a pressing issue for the entire district, so I'd really appreciate it, it, the district, if the Superintendent also was heavily involved in those discussions.
I think we have some interest in that, adding that goal. Anyone else want to comment? Bobby, go ahead.
As a third member of the, I, I also support that idea of adding the goal. We talked about, you know, looking at broader range issues and feasibility, uh, studies, so this would certainly fall into that, I think.
Perfect, he just added it. Okay.
What I listed was, uh, I'll just read it. Superintendent will work with the Finance Director and consultants to develop and present to the School Board a capital improvement plan focused on facility needs at Harwood Union Junior, Senior High School, as well as the other school facilities throughout the school district. So making it more broad, uh, the, the one other piece I do want to highlight is, uh, there are concerns with, from our theater department, there have been ongoing concerns with the auditorium that we talked about as part of the, the, um, bond project, and there are, are, our directors, our music directors, as well as our musical director, play director, have, uh, asked to meet with Lisa and me, and there, there is community interest in raising funds externally in our community outside of, you know, school district funds for important items like, uh, you know, there's some rigging issues that are really safety concerns on the stage, sound, uh, for productions, and also lighting. So that's something that, uh, that I'd like to at least have some feedback of, if the board is okay with me, just kind of moving along with that and getting some ideas. We'd certainly come back to the board before we would go public with anything, but, uh, they, they have felt, they've held off for a number of years, hoping that there was a bond that was coming, and when that didn't happen, uh, they, they've started to talk to parents and started to mobilize, and would really like to start some fundraising for important items.
Danielle?
You had mentioned earlier about seeking grants too, and would that also be considered part of this facility's look?
Yes.
And the other piece that, um, I have a question about is, did the letter that we drafted last year ever go to legislators about the support from, like, okay. Um, and then finally, um, we did adopt a ton of new policies, many of which had procedures that were necessary to be done and/or updated, and I'm not seeing that in your ongoing responsibilities, and I'm just curious if that should be called out because of the body of policy work.
Really good point, and I will, I, I will add that piece to it, something I forgot to add, and it's a really good reminder for all of us. Uh, and I have the other items listed, which were part of previous goals, so I will also add. And I have the other items listed, which were part of previous goals. So I will also add.
Danielle's like cleaning house here at the school board tonight. I like it. Ashel?
A quick comment on the budget section. It talks about student performance, but I feel like a more positive approach can be student experience. Because to be a student isn't perform, it's the way they move through the school, getting out of it, anything they can, even if it's not the best grade possible. The budget section of the proposal? Yeah.
I just changed it.
A job if you really, you'll like, you'd like it, I think. There you go. I love it. Bring it. Yeah, no doubt. He'd get my vote, I think. Okay, um, uh, okay, sorry. Are you feeling good about that, Cindy?
Sure. And if we could just change this motion to, can we just do with, add to this, with the addition of, as discussed at the board meeting?
With, as amended, there it is, as amended.
Those as amendments? Or do we?
Well, that, that document is amended, but.
Hey, Ashley, I had a few more comments. I had my hand up.
Okay, hold on one second. So. As it is now.
Okay, that's the way it is right now, as printed in the board meeting.
Perfect.
Presented at the board meeting. Let me change that to presented. As presented.
Turn your mic off, Cindy. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Thanks. So regarding the facilities, so one, Dr. Mike, as it relates to theater and music, you might want to have them also check with the booster club. I know I've been in discussions with them too, and I think there's some funds there, and there's some energy around using the booster club as a method to engage with the community to raise funds. So that just might be a note. Two is, I'd like to better understand with our facilities, how that relates to the future of public education, Dr. Mike, and conversations at the state level. Obviously, we'll come up with a plan, but I know that's something that is in flux. And then, thirdly, and I think this probably goes without saying, is as we come up with that facilities plan, just keeping in mind any facilities that might be on the list for future consolidation and making sure we're not spending money there. I think that goes without saying, right?
Thank you, Elizabeth. Really good comments. I'm making them right now.
Okay. And then just one comment in terms of the budget. I feel a little bit like a broken record here. But, you know, one thought is, is there a way to make this more measurable? And I know that I've been really pushing hard, not necessarily for like a specific number, but this feels, you know, a little bit of they. You know, we put together our budget every year, and we all know that everybody's working extremely hard in terms of reducing the budget for the coming year and looking at a multi-year strategy. But I think it's helpful when you're setting goals to have them be smart goals in terms of adding more specifics or measurements in here. So, you know, is there a way to say that, you know, the goal is to reduce by, you know, X percent of what the state average is? Or again, some range, so you're not plugged into a certain number as well as, and I think there's a comment on student performance. You know, something that I hear in the community is there is a great desire for the community to understand how Harwood Union is performing versus the nation versus state averages. So that probably goes beyond just this budget, but it gets back to that measurement and how we're showing effectiveness. So the broader comment here just for that, as well as the facilities is wherever possible, where we can put some sort of measurement in there, I would encourage us to do so.
Thanks. And Elizabeth, I was taking notes. Your first comment was auditorium. Your third one was just being mindful that the finance committee is considering any potential recommendations to the community for consolidation. What was your second one?
That was the future of public education. And just, I know that there's still conversations happening at the state level, understanding that there is aging facilities across the state. So as again, we're again revisiting the facility needs of the Harwood area, which we've seemed to have been doing for quite some time, is just being mindful and pacing alongside of what's going on at the state level. And which is why it's great having you there representing us.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Next, we're going to hear from Shannon Leslie about our final ESSR expenditure report. Sorry, we're going to vote first on the, adopting the goals. Oh, that's right. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Yes. This is the action items, not the consented. Okay, so we're going to make, I need a motion. Bobby's going to make a motion to adopt the superintendent goals as, as presented by Dr. Mike. Oh, we got the wrong names for the students. Take that out.
Take out Naomi, you take out Dylan? Celia, Grady, and Cashel. We can put first names and we can add.
Yep. Cashel, let's see. Okay, so we have a second. Oh, wait, once she's done here. Celia, okay. So I need a second on this motion. Bobby made the motion. JB is going to second. And now we're going to take a roll call vote. Celia.
Or abstain. Abstain means neither, just like.
Yes.
And Cashel?
Yes.
And Ellie?
Yes.
And Grady?
Yes.
You? And Bobby?
Yes.
Pan down a little because I can't see them. And JB? JB, JB's a yes. And Cindy? And Jonathan?
Yes.
And Elizabeth?
No.
Ben?
Yes.
Yep, Ben?
Yes.
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Life?
Yes.
Lori is absent. Danielle? That's okay. Mike Bishop?
Yes.
Dan? And last but never least, Steve Rosenberg.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, that will pass. Okay, moving on. Sorry. Now we're going to hear from Shannon Leslie about the wind up of the ESSR expenditure report.
Thank you, Ashley. So as a reminder to folks, we've been operating under what's called ARP ESSR, or otherwise known as ESSR III. I can pause for a second.
Somebody needs to mute in Zoom. We can hear your background noise.
Okay, I'll keep going. The, the, there's a link in the agenda that will bring you to a document called the H U U S C ARP ESSR Plan. And I actually did a quick search back in the history and saw that we start, first started to draft this plan back in October of 2021. And we're talking about things like contact tracing and the like, and that just seems like a really long time ago, which is good, right? We're moving past COVID. So if you scroll to page, the first three pages just provide background information about the ESSR funding. And this document was a template that was provided by the Agency of Education that they offered to all school districts to use to draft their plans. So much of the language is, was, was provided by the Agency of Education. If you scrolled to page four, that's where you'll start to see some tables about our spending and the different categories that that spending fell into. So there was a category related to prevention and mitigation strategies. There was a category related to academic impact of lost instructional time. And then 80% of your funds could go toward, sorry, 20% of your funds overall had to go toward that academic impact. And then the remaining 80% could go to any other strategies to help mitigate COVID. So you'll see in, in all of these tables, in the right-hand column, there was the original amount that was proposed back in, when we started in October of 2021. You'll see some dates with some updated numbers. Lisa and I met this summer to look at our investments that were a part of our original plan and did some budget reconciliation. For example, a big part of this funding went to fund interventionist salaries. And over the past three years, we've had some people move positions. And that will obviously result into an adjustment of that salary, whether they were on a higher, higher pay scale, lower pay scale. Their benefits also played a role. So after we did that adjustment, we presented at a board meeting this past spring about an amendment to add helping to fund summer school. Because of all those budget adjustments, we were able to locate funding within ARP ESSR to be able to do that. And then most recently, to Mike Bishop's question about the funding for the cell phone pouches. I had a conversation with the Harwood principals in terms of identifying funding sources. And as Mike said, there was funding or there is funding in their local budget to be able to support the cost. However, there is also funding left unspent in ESSR that can cover the cost of the $22,000 to cover the cell phones. I went ahead and applied for an amendment through the A O E to see if the A O E would approve funding of the cell phones. And I just got approval from the Secretary of Education on August 16th, so this month. So I think what's on the table here is if the board approves spending ARP ESSR, using ARP ESSR, sorry, to support the purchase of the cell phones, which are currently, the purchase order is underneath a local budget line. But we can do a budget adjustment to shift those costs to come under ARP ESSR. Which, again, Mike said are one-time funds, they sunset in four weeks. And in my humble opinion, I think we should take advantage of the fact that we have the money available. And I'll take any questions.
Ben and then Mike?
So in four weeks, and this ESSR money can only be used for, am I right in thinking this, only certain, only certain light items for certain things. And so this is something that we can, we can spend it on. And if we don't spend it on this, that money essentially disappears. Is that, is that accurate?
Correct.
Mike Bishop?
Thank you. I was just going to say, could this money have been used to buy theater equipment that Dr. Mike just brought up as opposed to cellphone pouches or other things?
The, the answer is no, but I'll ask Lisa to give you an idea.
Well, could you, could you have filed an amendment like you did for the cellphone pouches?
I'll ask Shannon also chime in, but oh, that it wouldn't be approved under, for theater. You know, it wouldn't have met the guidelines for the use of ARPS R funding. And remember, this is really one-time funding, so any unspent dollars would then be returned. So.
Right. But she just said that she had to file an amendment or, or ask for special permission. I'm just wondering if that's something that could have been used, because I'm sure there's lots of other things that the school could use that maybe would be nice to have or, or whatever. I'm just throwing it out there. That was my only concern about the 22,000 is we're buying cellphone pouches when there's other things that, that we obviously know need to be done. Thank you.
I, I could just add to a little bit more description to what Lisa was trying to say. There's, there's specific, I guess I will use the word rules behind what you can use ARP ESSR funding for. And you have to connect it to student engagement, learning loss, things like that. So affect host effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. So updating equipment in a theater or an auditorium would, the A O E would probably not approve that because they would, they would need to see the connection between upgrading equipment and learning loss. That said, you know, there might be a way that you could make the case in terms of student engagement where you could bring kids into a space and have, you know, better equipment there. But we just, we didn't consider it at that time.
Instead of questioning it, I'd like to say thank you for finding a novel way to cover the expenses for the cellphone pouches.
As my aside, I didn't get to say this earlier, but I would encourage, regardless of where you stand on, on the issue, I do highly encourage everyone to pick up a copy of The Anxious Generation. It's a book by Jonathan Haidt, who was actually a professor of my daughter's when she went to the NYU Stern School of Business. He is a high-profile professor, social psychologist at one of the top five business schools in the country. Has done extensive research on, and it just is a really good read. When we talk about use of ARP ESSR money and learning loss and mental health needs, like again, there's, there's, there's a correlation to all those pieces, which is why I believe Secretary of Education approved the funding. But there's also movements, my former. Education approved the funding. But there's also movements, my former home, the legislature passed a bill that would allow the use of money, similar kinds of money, state money for yonder pouches and other purchases related to cell phones. So it's, it's a growing movement. But again, regardless of that piece, it's, it's an excellent book that I would encourage every school board member to, to read. I'd be happy to share my copy, but it's, it's an exceptional publication.
Thank you for that.
If you're a visual learner, there is also a documentary out there called Anxious Nation that a lot of folks in this district have seen. I think students you at Harwood watched it. Yep.
I think it's important, it's, it's an important way, the decision to utilize those funds before they disappear, A and B, anyway, even if that weren't the case, that the, the use of those funds for these pouches to make it for the students and other people who have cell phones or whatever, the students primarily, shows, makes it an easier procedurally issue thing. It's a way we can deal with, what do we do with cell phones and a commitment to supporting this decision to have this procedure. That's, that's all I think. I just think it just shows that there is a, that there's a real that there, the use of some of our funding to, to do that, that we recognize how important it is to, to do that, to have cell phones not in everybody's hands all day long.
Thank you. I agree with that, Cindy. So Danielle, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And I also don't like leaving any grant money on the table ever. So I think that's brilliant. What I would ask for us to consider is in the future, and I'm, I'm really moved and motivated by the feedback we got from students, the survey that happened at the spring of last school year, this spring, where they were talking about a list of things that really mattered to them for the school. And there were some of those that were one-time purchases. And what's sticking in my head, and I'm sorry, I don't, I just was looking to find the actual literature on it. But there was something about study space furniture or something. And I just would ask us, in the future, when there is spend left over from a grant, because that will happen again and again. And I have this issue in my professional life too, where the, you know, the feds say, oh, you have this little windfall, and we're never prepared for it. And yet, if you're strategically planning in advance, then you can take advantage and leverage those things. But the student survey had some very concrete, one-time expense things. There were big things too, like the windows in the science room and things like that, and air quality and different things. But then there were some things that were attainable with this extra funding. And I wish that, and again, no disrespect to the cellphone thing. I recognize the issue that that is. But I wish that in the future, we would take a step back and say, are there things on the table that we're not currently able to do that this may help with? Because that case could easily have been made to the Agency of Education, that that would have a direct impact on student social emotional, because that was the case that y'all made. Yeah.
It's like adding on to that a little bit. That was definitely one of the highest requested, the new furniture and just kind of like calming spaces for studying. I mean, the library is definitely a big hub for that during lunches, study hall, et cetera. But as a senior now with uptime, I'm not always going to be leaving. So having a nice space, yes, the senior cafe is very nice. Having like a nice study space to go, it would be really nice, maybe a newer. And I think students understand that and are actually kind of moving towards that on our own, not necessarily with funding, like the graduating class, I believe, they fundraised to get new kind of seating furniture in the senior cafe slash Kate's Garden area. And I think that part of that can definitely be saved. And is it, oh, with students, like, yes, but also like, kind of just rallying around, like, how can we make the library like a better place? Like, can we add a lamp or two? Like, I think it's definitely something that we don't have to wait for grant money to start kind of creating. Like, it's already, yeah, we don't, I feel like, yes. And it's already in the back of students' minds from last year. So it's definitely, it's definitely slowly progressing, not necessarily with the need of grant money.
One thing I do want to point out is that not this fiscal year, because we did have to cut our furniture budget. But over the last two years since I've been here, I know Meg and Lori have, that was their biggest concern, is to be able to get new spaces for the students. And in the last two years, they have updated a lot of spaces. It is on their agenda for going forward, and it is part of their normal operation budget. In all of the schools, there is operating funds to update furniture, replace furniture where needed. So it is on the list, and it has happened over the last couple of years. Unfortunately, this year, we did have to cut $150,000 of our furniture budget out. And, you know, not being able to do it this year because we had a cutback. But where we can, out of our supply budget, we are allowing some purchases to move forward. But it is part of their operational budget. But I know Meg and Lori, that was their major concern in budgeting and planning is to update some of the spaces in the high school. And they've done a tremendous job with the students so far.
Danielle, with the new reps this year, I haven't necessarily shared it with them, but I am planning on doing more of those kind of like, what do you think as a community, we can kind of like make better, like with this cut budget? So I think that's definitely going to come up again. And we'll do more surveys on that to get like, you know, a better sense of what students are specifically thinking about.
Love to hear from students, and that will weigh in importantly along this budget journey, for sure. Okay, so our next action item is to accept the final, that's what I'm about to say, final Esser expenditure report, which will include spending the $22,000 of Esser funds to buy the yonder pouches. Do we have that in our? I don't, it's in there as it is, we've got it. So it's as, are there objections or abstentions to passing this action item?
Ashley, I'm, I'm voting no.
Okay, that's, okay, then we'll do a roll call. Okay. Okay, hold on one second. We're going to update this sheet, and we're going to do a roll call again. Celia Cashel. Yes, C A S A G M. Grady. He'll be all perfect next time. All right, let's start with Celia.
Did it work?
Yep. That's a yes from Celia. Cashel?
Yes.
Ellie? Ellie's gonna abstain. And Grady?
Also abstained.
And Bobby? JB? Cindy? Jonathan?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
No.
Ben?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
Life?
Yes.
Zero out Tori because she is absent. Danielle? Mike? Bishop?
Uh, no.
Dan? Steve?
Yes.
With 53.55%, that will pass. No, wait, sorry, I'm reading it wrong. 63. Is that, is it 63? Sorry, 63.3% are yes, with 31.65% being no, with abstentions. That will pass. The next action item is the professional staff employment and change in status of individuals listed per the effective date of 2425.
And is the board last approved our new hires in June before the summer break? And so these are employees that were hired over the summer. And it does include some changes of status for a number of employees, including for Meg McDonough to move to principal, sole principal, starting October 11th, I believe.
Yes, can we get a little direction on how to read it, Mike?
If you want to pull it up in yours. So if you open up the professional staff and employment, new employees, be able to pull that up simply. Back to the agenda. Oh. Yes, you're right. I, I got it. I fixed it. No. So the top portion of that is new employees, recommendations, and then change in title status section would be anyone who is going to a new position within the school district or change in title. So for example, Alex Morse is going to be a school counselor at Fiston. She was an art teacher. So that's just a, she continues at the same salary, same position, but it's just a change in title and building for her. Does that answer your question?
Sorry, Tina Clark, for example.
Elementary professional employee full-time. Is that saying that she worked as an elementary professional for a year, and now she's being assigned to a first grade classroom?
Yeah, Brookside.
Am I reading that right? Okay, that's why I don't understand how to read this.
Tina Clark, the top is new employees for the 2425 school year. So Tina Clark is being employed as an elementary professional employee full-time. Because in, in school code, if you're hired after July 1st, it's a one-year position. So we have to repost that. So she is being hired as a one-year position only, and she's being assigned to a first grade classroom at Brookside.
Does anyone have any questions about this? Any questions in Zoom?
And just, just, we have certain dates listed, just according to the collective bargaining agreement, teacher seniority begins on the day they sign their contract. So that's why you'll see different days listed for different employees. So if you are, you know, if it would come to a situation where you would have to riff a position, and it required a layoff of a person, you would look to see who was the last, who was the least senior, and there would, if there were two people, and one signed their contract on July 1st, and one signed their contract on July 2nd, the person on July 2nd would be the junior person.
Pick on Tina Clark, but just using that as an example. So 7/23/2023 would have been over a year ago. So is this her second one-year position? Okay.
Any other questions? Anybody? Okay, so we, yep, we are going to make, need a motion to approve the professional staff employment and change in status as presented in the meeting agenda. Does someone want to make that motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second from Dan? And are there any abstentions or, how do you say that? Objections or abstentions to passing this as written? That will pass. Okay. That brings us to number eight, which is consent agenda. That's the one where, yeah, that's the easier one where we prove it all in one lump. This consent agenda includes approving the warrants from 7/17 and 7/30, as well as approving the FY25 warrants. Why does that mean? Why does that say 25 warrants?
We hadn't closed out fiscal year 24, and we started fiscal year 25. So we have to distinguish what warrants go to what year, what fiscal year.
Okay, that makes sense. So also approving the warrants for 7/18, 20, of 2024, and 7/31 of 2024, 8/15 of 2024. Also ratifying the recall rights side letter final. Yes.
And I can comment on that. In conversations with the Harwood Unified Education Association, we did lay off some teachers, some world language teachers. And in having a discussion, number one, there are a number of teachers who were laid off who have recall rights. The contract calls for a two-year recall right. But because of some information that we know about existing employees and potential retirements, we felt it was beneficial for the district and the association of teachers to, in these particular instances, for these particular individuals, to extend that recall period to a three-year period. So that's the one piece to this. The second piece, and there's a, a second piece to the second part, in reviewing this, we all missed in reviewing the contract and also in reviewing contracts in past adoptions prior to the current contract, that at some point, the, one of the predecessor boards and unions adopted a different, some different criteria for recall and allow people who reject recall to still remain on the list. But the language was never changed. So there is, there's a piece of the, the language that did not make sense as we all read it and said, something doesn't sound right here. It says, the original language is the laid off teacher shall have the right to recall for, rights for two years following the effective date. And if recalled, it goes on, a teacher may refuse any recall offer without penalty, and she shall remain eligible for the remainder of his two-year recall period. But then in C, it said, one of the reasons they could be removed was for failing to accept a recall offer. So it was contradictory. So we kind of went back through the, the old contracts. We found when that language was added in the paragraph and the corresponding letter C was never struck. So this is a specific side letter that pertains just to those individuals, but we're working on a side letter that would amend that language in the contract permanently. And we'll bring that back to the board probably at the next meeting. But just, my, my experience with contracts is you go through with a fine tooth comb, and we had an excellent board committee and teacher committee, and a lot of people's eyes on it. And with a large document, there's always going to be something that, that you miss. And that was something that we missed in that review of it.
Okay, thank you for that. Also in this consent agenda is to approve the 6/12/24 meeting minutes, and then approve for warning. and then approve for warning the listed policies, which a bunch are deletions because they've been rolled into other policies. And the other one is F3 draft search and seizure of students by school personnel. So with the consent agenda, do we have a motion? JB has made a motion to pass the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Danielle and Bobby? Okay, so are there any objections or abstentions to passing the consent agenda? Zoomers, anybody? Okay, not hearing any or seeing any, that will pass. The last line item was, we forgot to take it out, which was nine, which is communication, which at this point, we would, in the years past, we would have dedicated this to the recap. But we are no longer going to use the recap. We're going to not do that and just use the minutes. We have a very good minute taker, Carol Chamberlain. Thank you, Carol. She never gets enough credit. She does a great job for us, and she's done it for years. So we're in communication land, we're using the minutes and the video of this meeting, obviously. So unless anyone has anything else they'd like to say, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Do we have a second? Ellie seconds it. All right, all those in favor say later. Thanks, everybody. Great first meeting.